...call our February 20th work session to order, please silence or shut off your cellphones if you would, and please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Melanie, we have any additions or additions to the agenda this time?
Yes, one addition, annual recertification financial assurance.
So, let's get to start right off. We'll start out with our nine o'clock, Mr. Kevin Hawke. Come on up, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, boy. And you also have the addition, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so do that one at the same time, too.
In front of you should be skid steer and planar head. We'll do that one first if that's all right.
Yes.
The road department wishes to trade a ninety-five grader and a two thousand roller together on skid steering planar head. The skid steer will offer us some availability and future preservation maintenance on our grant projects as well as general maintenance projects throughout the county. So, in front of you is a trade value and a balance of over forty-five hundred dollars, this piece of equipment. Use skid steer lightly, lightly used, has just three hundred dollars on it.
And this is a little similar setup that you rented this year and own some...
So, last season, thanks for bringing that up. We demoed the same type of machine, just to see what its uses, availabilities and such would be, and came into great use on these grant projects, needing some ODOT specs that go along with that specifically for paving and milling notches. And recently, we rented a similar type of machine with a mowing head on that we could actually use this one for, for mowing on bedroffays where we have serious visibility problems. This is going to be a good addition for us.
Yeah, I was really impressed with the pictures that you brought in and showed us of work. Plus, this also be used out on some of the patching on the road.
Well, it's gonna, yeah, the planer head, the planer head that comes with it is gonna get used because there will be in the future here needs for patching prior to our chip seals, so.
Yeah, part of our preservation plan as the funding keeps reducing.
Yep.
I...
I totally, I wasn't quite as impressed by these pictures, but...
They were, they were a little fuzzy.
A little fuzzy.
A little fuzzy. Well, that's the operator, not the...
That's it, probably was.
Yeah. So, we have that on the agenda for tomorrow.
Yeah.
And you've told me past legal counts on everything. All fits our programs.
Just for the record, Commissioner, because you said lightly used, two thousand sixteen, just so we got that date.
Two thousand sixteen and skid steer, yes. It is, it is lightly used.
Okay, let's go ahead and do your addition.
Um, the addition is maybe more simplistic and yearly update for financial assurance for DEQ. I've gone ahead and put your name on, Commissioner Winters, and get signed there in front of the notary. And second page, our budget officer assists with the financials there that we will have just prior to June for our financial closure.
Yes. Now, you have on your general fund hat landfill, this is landfill assurance.
Yep, financial assurance for landfill.
Yep. That looks, that's good, pretty good.
This is no fiscal impact, just needs to be signed so I can get it back to DEQ.
Uh, so it's sort of time sensitivity like that.
It is, I think it, I think it's sooner you pull, but sooner the better, so.
So, I'd entertain a motion. We go ahead and get this one done today, Commissioner.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the annual recertification of financial assurance as presented.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the annual recertification of financial assurance as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I'll go ahead and leave this copy with Melanie. It has my signature on it, it's preparing the financials, so.
I can sign it right now? Do you need to take it over again?
Well, it goes in front of the notary.
Oh, okay.
Obviously, it's with Melanie.
And we want Melanie to be able to arrange that.
Yep. Okay. Do you have anything else, Governor?
I have two updates, one for the road department, well, some information for the road department, and then some for the landfill as well, if I have a couple minutes.
You bet.
And then I'm not sure if the next time is with... So, for the road department, our Dog Lake program, our Dog Lake project, second phase that will be starting in April ninth, unless the weather would allow me to coordinate a little earlier work there. That's when our milling machine will start, April ninth, to start removing that road. So, public is aware, have made contact with a lot of the people that use that road, pretty continuous, so they're aware of that as well. And she must not have been able to make it. I was gonna introduce you to Sharon Osmolsky, which I believe I introduced you to her the other day at the Spill Act meeting.
From the Forsters?
From the Forsters.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. To discuss, we are going to work together, entertain an agreement later on that we'll bring before you, for us to pave their repair when they're ready for that, since we will have all the equipment there. It'll be a good partnership to entertain. We'll bring that forward once we get all the bugs worked out.
Will they have their engineering and their, all that stabilized? Is that about the right time?
That's what I've been, that's what I've been told. And then they have, they have a set of specs of their own that we're just gonna follow. And we've talked about just a simple square foot price for reimbursement, mostly because we're already there with hot mix and we have all the equipment there, so.
Very good.
Yep.
Great partnership.
That'll happen this summer at some point. So, to move on to the landfill for updates, the contract for landfill operations is coming up here in the near future, and so that, make sure you're made aware of that. And also, just to discuss some concurrence amongst the board to look at most of the county operated landfill, so.
Yeah, I definitely concur that we should analyze where we're at and where we, what our options might be going forward.
No, absolutely. I think, I think it'd be good for you to have that concur or consensus of the board to look into and evaluate what all of our options are, for that to go ahead and get right away because of the time is getting right there close.
Yeah.
Okay.
Consensus of the board for you to do it.
Thank you.
Do we have to stick to this time schedule?
What?
You don't have to talk another ten minutes, I'm waiting.
No, we, we can move right along. Let's go, the ten, ten item is what you're referring to, am?
Yeah, nine, no, twenty.
I mean, well, we have the nine, ten resolution.
We're gonna get a different board, but I'm sure you don't have the...
So, we didn't.
Did I not get the new one? Maybe I'll pick this one up over here on my left.
Oh, here it is. Oh, it's right there. I must move along too quickly.
Not too fast.
So, this resolution kind of piggybacks a little bit of that annual recertification. However, this resolution incorporates the new Thomas Creek landfill, and this language and this resolution again is required by DEQ. We set aside dollars every year in case something happens to Lake County, there's money available to close the landfill. So, even though we're a government entity that should always be operational and receiving tax dollars, this is actually EPA rule that filters down to DEQ that requires money to be set aside somewhere. The good news is, with all the work that Kevin's done with ACOM, I'm saying their name right?
Yep.
These estimates are much more realistic than we've seen in the past, and so the requirement is about twenty thousand dollars annually until 2032. We've seen dollars go into disclosure fund ranging anywhere from fifteen thousand to twenty-three thousand. So, this twenty thousand is definitely in line with what we've been doing. I think the other piece of information to have in the back of our head is as we close Lake County landfill, the one sale right now, it's possible that these estimates can be revised in a couple of years, and we can see that number change again. But until that happens, we have to use this document. So, a few things about this resolution, it kind of states all the closure costs, the values and things like that. Something to point out, item number four at the bottom of the first page says that Lake County will use any excess funds remaining in the closure fund at the time of all solid waste disposal site permit terminations to fund alternative solid waste infrastructure within the county. So, what that is saying is even if we close all these sites and we start shipping out or we do something different, those dollars still remain for solid waste activities. Pretty easy for us to make that commitment. But I wanted to say, because we feel like we're going to have savings in this closure fund, that we, we're hoping so, we know what, we don't know what that's gonna be, this allows us to keep using those dollars for solid waste activities.
Well, once we, once we close the actual current landfill, a lot of financial assurance responsibilities comes away, and that's what the balance is issues discussing.
Well, it'll be primarily monitoring after that for the old...
Right, correct. That, that process though, won't happen over a week though. It's a long period of time because of the nature of using the soil out of the road to close the hole.
Yep. Makes sense.
This is actually very good that we can put both together.
Oh, yeah.
And this was, this is one of the last, I hope, items on DEQ's agenda for us to move forward with approved permit.
Yep. That's great.
All right, so that, that is on for tomorrow's agenda.
We'll get this, I'm gonna, I'll come back in for a later...
Come back in?
Yeah.
Well...
Don't be too long.
Okay.
Well, we're, everything's timed, so we, we have quite a bit of time.
So, I, I'm making a proposal because we haven't typically had all these things timed, but if anyone comes in later that is come up specifically for these, then you go back and read his mission, because, yeah, we've got at least an hour and a half before the last thing tight.
Yeah, yeah. So, with that, we are going to vary from the, everything being timed, so come on, go ahead and have Walt come up, it's a nine thirty item. Would Walt go ahead? We're gonna go out of much time.
Thank you.
We gotta say, Mr. Walt.
I'm fairly new to this, so please be gentle. So, I am before you at the request of Lake County Assessor Dave Mulls. I believe that he has presented you with some information regarding Senate Bill 1513 that was adopted by the state in 2016.
Correct.
Yep.
And so, this was, this went through and passed legislation just last year, and this, this is something that gives us the opportunity to act, and by resolution, to have this part of our operations here.
Yes, that is correct.
Well, since it is new, Commissioner Walt, it would be good to just, because this is a wonderful thing, in my opinion. So, maybe you could expand a little bit on just exactly what it is.
Uh, it, it relates to property tax exemption for the homesteads of a surviving spouse of certain public safety officers. Those would be fire service professionals, police officers, and reserve officers that are killed in the line of duty. I, I was told that you may want to know if that pertains to be on firefighting or fire service or...
That's one of my questions.
And it does not.
Does not?
It does not.
Even if it is an act of...
Even if it is in the line of duty, if, if you go to the ORS 181A dot three fifty-five where it describes fire service personnel, it specifically excludes out wildland firefighters.
Okay. So, any, any reserve, city, county, state, federal law enforcement?
City, town, I actually spoke of a great thumb of the DLR, because the documentation refers to city, and I know that we have a town of Lakeview, so I wanted to make sure that that was included. I needed research, and he says according to this research that the town of Lakeview would be qualified for that.
Okay, so they don't have to do resolution because this through our assessor's office it's covered, covers all those entities?
Yeah, according to the, the statute, the county has to provide the resolution, and that should cover that.
Well, you know, going back to the other agencies and having spent a long time in that field, fire doesn't know, you know, and I know we're dealing with what is the legislation that was passed, but I'm hopeful that we can have some discussion with our state legislators because this is a wonderful thing to hire those and to make it a little bit less impactful to the surviving spouse, and it shouldn't matter what uniform they have on when they are in that business, so.
Yes, and this, thank you for answering that question. I did oppose that one. Thank you very much. So, this is on for tomorrow unless you have other questions on it, Commissioner?
No. I just, as I said, I think it's a, it's a really good thing that we're able to do for those surviving.
Yep, I, I agree. Very good thing. Paul, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You too. Mr. Walt, might as well let you get up there.
Go forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep. How you doing, Jim?
Good.
Good.
The, the state passed a law last year allowing community solar up to a maximum of three megawatts, and we've been working on that. They haven't established a payback fee rate yet, that's in, they got up to a year to establish the rules and stuff, but we wanted to be the first ones on the list when at the end of this year is the scheduled time to put in the three megawatt system that would serve the hospital, all the schools, including the innovation learning center, and it has a low income, so we would talk to them, talk to climate lake housing on the three low-income housing units, which have some inefficiencies with the potential ceilings and different things like that, but it'd be a great asset to that. That will come to over three, that will be three megawatts. I'm pretty confident in that study. We need a piece of land that is short distance to a power station or lines. I will tell you right now, when Obsidian Renewables builds the forty-five megawatt and ED heat energy gets served done, line capacity's gone and it's used up. So, we want to be there. We picked out two pieces of property that meet that criteria, both are county properties. One is just across from the man camp where the substation is, your back farthest piece of property. Oh, three megawatts, I mean, yeah, three megawatts takes five acres and a megawatt, so we're looking at fifteen acres is what we're looking at to meet that criteria. And at that end, you've got, I should have brought my map, a little over twenty at that end. And then the other one is the far northwest corner of the fairgrounds, past Serena, it's the end used portion back there, it doesn't use, that's exactly right at fifteen acres. And those would be the two desired properties that have line capacity, availability of line for us to look at. And we're just in that looking stage right now. Sustainable Northwest to sort of obtain money from the U.S. Department of Energy to assist us with an engineer that's coming out shortly and agreed upon to do the analysis. Now, the PUC discussing the rate that the utilities would have to pay, and that's Pacific Power and PTE to industrial utility. They claim that they should only pay five cents kilowatt hour because they do not have, the solar does not require building line capacity and distribution system. And, you know, that's a good argument, and I have to agree with that. I did submit my testimony, and the fact that I'm not a believer in carbon fees for climate change or, or carbon tax, I'm back in Lake County, if our calculations are right, it will offset all our climate change emissions seven times four with renewable energy, with the six hundred megawatts from the city. So, I said, you know, it's a dual responsibility. I still drive a diesel truck and haul a stock trailer, you know? I got a responsibility, and I'm willing to, so a rate somewhere in between, I said, I don't know what's fair, but something in between to make it profitable. But it comes up five cents, we're done, that's not a problem. We can't, can't do it for that.
That's too low.
Now, I've made agreements, we haven't written a contract because we're not there, we just want to be ready to submit at the end of the year to the PUC for this community solar, but Obsidian Renewables has agreed to build the system for us, and that would be at a considerably reduced cost because they will already be mobilized to build the forty-five megawatts at the airport. So, they're, they're willing to come in and do that as a community service, not free, but, you know, pretty cheap.
Yeah.
And so, we're ready to go, just to then align the properties to use with your permission to study those, and then start preparing the application and stuff. And I meant, I've talked to Ronnie, and I've got a scheduled appointment to go over with Ronnie at the fairgrounds too on that piece, but I think it's a suitable, nonusable piece back there.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go on the, the fairgrounds, the board of commissioners only can sell property as far as leases and all that, the fair board makes those decisions. So, you have to go before the fair, fair board to make sure on that, but you've already started that process. That one intrigues me quite a bit, I'm actually on fair board too, so. But then the other piece, I believe you probably have time to talk with other Commissioners individually, me and you both talked about...
No, already, we don't have that topic, yeah.
So, where the, the man camp is, I've individually always been quite protective for that because of urban growth boundary. Jim and I had looked at it, the lower end, which is still within urban growth boundary, but my, as desirable for light industry or for growth is where he's talking about doing that, so for me...
You're talking primarily back towards the road department in and out?
Yeah.
That, yeah, was...
And it could even come around towards the, depend on what they've studied, then it could come around towards the search and rescue, it's that lower part back in there. I don't know that it'd come around by search and rescue, I think it'd stop there at the creek, but that lower end of it, looking on Google Earth, you can see where that has been disturbed over the years, so they'd have to do the study and everything, but that'd still be preserving the largest part for growth for our community, an improved area there.
No, everything back towards the man camp is, is pretty valuable land, yeah. So, Jim, going back to the acreage requirement, has the solar gotten that much more efficient? I thought the last figure was seven acres per...
It's getting more efficient all the time. They just broke the record on it with the new product, not Obsidian, but it was just this, reading this one, and renewable energy world digested.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just broke another record on efficiencies.
Well, that'll be good.
You know, technology just keeps increasing on it, and, and it's gonna make the hospital and the schools almost net zero energy with the geothermal they have, and, and that's good. I think it'd be really well. We won't, like I said, know the final answer until we know what the payback is, and you don't have to be tied to a meter under community solar, that's the beauty part about it. I could actually build it in North County, except for all, I don't know how it impacts the, the cooperative utilities. I mean, they don't have to, they're always exempt, and I don't know how that would work out there. So, it's easier to work right into our territory and on their lines to make it work because they have those requirements, and I think it's a good deal.
I do, too. So, I think you probably explained this to me, but give it one more shot. For them, to net zero, we're talking hospitals, schools, and what is the other one?
Hospital and the schools primarily.
And then low-income housing.
But it, it would be solar, but they don't have geothermal.
Right.
So, you know, so they want to be near that.
So, so how does that work as this is producing power? Is it offset the cost to the hospital and the school, is that way it's...
Yes, they get, the meter runs, they're on this, it's on meter, the solar system is, and so they pay, the utility offsets their costs on their meter with the dollars that they're having to pay from that production.
And, and...
It goes on to their system and goes wherever they desire.
And investor gets paid at the same time for their investment to pay them off, so...
Yeah.
But produces enough over a certain number of years, investors paid off plus it reduces their...
You know, if by the end of the year, application time, we'll have a full budget of cost in the hospital, assume the schools will go with Obsidian building it, hospital may pay them off right away and be earning that money. Otherwise, we'll do, you know, we're gonna try and aim for like a five to seven year payback on it, depending what that price comes in.
Yeah.
We can't do the business plan until we get back, but we will do that if it all comes about, you know?
So, if we agree to this general area to be studied, what kind of timeframe when you top in for that study to be done?
The initial study's gonna start this next week.
This next week?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we've got a timeline on the engineer that we got from the Department of Energy, certified engineer to come and work with us on it to get some of that. We have to wait, the time span on the property decision will be, you know, until the end of the year when we get to PUC rules. We don't even have, know what that is, so we're, we're just wanting to be in position to be ready to move and stuff.
So, if we, by consensus, agree to this study, it doesn't commit us to that land being available, it just makes it...
I would want a, a strong indication so not to, so that we don't waste a lot of time, because if we don't have it by the end of the year, then...
Well, I think as Commissioner Winters said, we can, I think we can give a nod of approval to move forward and work on the details exactly, but you are gonna have to talk to the fair board.
Yes, I do, I got it, yeah.
Yeah, we can.
I told my list to get the holder on me today.
Is there only one project that you can have per county?
No, we could act, maximums three megawatts. I assume we could come back in with another three megawatt or another megawatt, you know, whatever, we can do that. I just wanted to get through this first one.
Sure.
I've been promising Charlie Quaid for some time I'd figure out something in solar for the hospital, and, and I've always been, of course, thrilled with the ILC and the schools and all that can say, and so I thought right then, I know what that limit is, that hospital uses a lot of power, you know, so I thought, but we'd be willing to go back for another one.
Well, I know that's down the road, but there's probably gonna be, probably gonna be some other places in the county that, because I'm sure we could end up working with mid-state.
Yep, we'll know more about the limitations when the rules are published.
Yeah.
Again, all we're doing is off the law and no rules, you know, under development, so.
Yeah.
But we want to be at that edge and ready to move.
Sounds really good.
All right, so you're, when we've done the Google Earth part of your, that buffer zone between the man camp and everything, it's that lower part, it's the same as what we look at?
Yes, exactly. Same.
So, that's not on for tomorrow?
No.
You want to do that by consensus?
Yeah.
Okay.
Concur that we should.
We concur. Go ahead and do that study.
Okay.
Details can come later on, agreement, if the study shows that the property is desired.
Yeah, we'll be back with full business plan once we got the rules down and know it works, know the prices work, so, yeah. Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, so, Jim, many strike, party is supposed to start, so that's, that's pretty good by our... We have the Watership Council and the Water Master update. We have the updates from you first, Marcia, it'd be better for the Water Master to go first before you show all the great projects that's happened here.
She has two great projects, don't worry. Have you liked them?
Do you?
Have you liked them? Won't take very long because there's not much there.
Yeah, yeah, let's take your update first, just in case, and then, we'll save the best for?
I've got a little bit of fresh data this morning on snowpack.
Is there a snowpack?
No.
No.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Sorry to the audience for the agenda being blown today, but that's the way it is.
Brian, when I asked Melanie to get ahold of you on this, you know, every year, we run into the situation where people are asking, are we gonna declare a drought emergency?
Well, hopefully they weren't seen last year.
Well, no. But, with that said, that's one of the things that I don't know that we know yet, and we'll leave it up to you to tell us.
Well, we've got all March, you know, April.
Yep.
Typically, things don't get happening out here until mid-May unless the weather warms up real fast. So, the paper I gave you this morning is a cut from the Snowtell line. I feel you noticed the top set of numbers are from this morning. I mean, I'm a little bit fresh off the, off the database. So, these are our Snowtell sites, and you take a look basin-wide, we're saying we have thirty-seven percent of our tenure floating, um, snowpack. And, you know, so there's a couple of stations that are, you know, we're recording, Sheldon for one, but there's nothing out there to report. And then Crazy Man, for some reason, Shee Walk Camp went offline. And that's one of the stations we get sure of the Shee Walk Camp. So, and then right below it, I put 2014 down there. Twenty fourteen was a particularly bad year out here. And I just put it up there as comparison to where we're at now. This is from the same timeframe, February twentieth of twenty fourteen. So you can see we're forty-two percent of our, um, pre-sip menu, somewhat our equivalency in twenty fourteen, and then this year we're running twenty-seven percent, or thirty-seven At this point in time, it's not looking real good. I told my wife that, you know, she's rarely gone all the time because of regulations, so it's gonna be short and fast, and that's gonna be it. Reservoirs, right now, Drew's was saying about thirty-six thousand acre feet of water. Typically, they like to have fifty, when they start the season. Here, they twelve thousand acres, and they deliver typically around three acres of per acre, so, and maybe coming up short this year as well. What else going on, Thompson, my station went offline up there, I don't know if we can, but it wasn't looking good. Cottonwood, say you have twenty-nine, Phil is, Phil is forty-two. So, we're low there too. But like I said, we've got all March and April, you know? Down here, irrigation season starts down here April one legally by decree. But like I said, nobody really starts until, you know, first part of May, mid-May, when the ground warms up to act and do some good, then we start irrigating.
So it's one of the stay tuned type things?
Yeah. What I was gonna suggest is, is let's do this again in a couple of weeks and see where we're at, see if anything changes.
So you wanna go for the second set of meetings in March?
Yes.
I know that's a little more than a couple.
I think we'll do the first meeting, so we ask travel to Christmas Valley and do this tonight.
No, that'd be fine.
No. You don't have to. Second, second meeting in March.
Yeah.
We'll put it on my calendar, well, it's on my calendar already.
And Melanie will put it down to put it on the other calendar, so.
Yeah, story-wise, we're not looking real good on any of our stories, and that actually covers quite a background. You guys with groundwater will be all right, guys with, you know, some short water will be all right. If you guys are on the life flow, they're gonna really hurt this year if things don't pick up.
What's, how are the desert water holes? You got a?
Honestly, I don't know.
Yeah.
I know that there's, there's quite a bit of carryover in the, in those holes this year. We didn't have much evaporation, we had plenty of water to keep things pull up. I mean, we were spilling water on a former river's end in July into Abert off the Shee Walk Camp, was that, was that funneled?
Yeah. Oh, that's good.
Yeah, and actually, you know, just like Abert, you know, all the natural lakes out here fared pretty well after this last year, that pre, in their pre-sip, we had, and they were a little bit worse this year though.
Well, this last storm seemed to have a distinct line just off the cascades where there was six to eight, ten inches of snow, and then as we moved east, it just didn't happen.
Didn't happen. Yeah, we came, when we came back the first of January, it was a storm that was supposed to track this way, and it just didn't, it tracked off to the east and missed us again.
Yep. Well, that's a good, good thing coming in.
So we don't really have any real chance for snowpack, but for moisture, we're?
Yeah, moisture, if you look at the pre-sip numbers, that's the far right column, that's at sixty-six percent. Others up rain, essentially, that's all pre-sip rain and snow. That's basin-wide, some are better than others, some aren't. Like Coors Mountain, we're now eighty-four percent, I don't, I don't, fifty, careful that station, I don't think it tracks real well.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Brian.
Marcia's great here.
Good morning, Marcy.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm great, thank you. Thanks for seeing me today. I just thought I'd hand over for both of you.
Great.
Our accomplishments for the year. So I have typical PowerPoint format, just some pictures, but hopefully, a little extra time, I'll try to be quick too, I have a lot of slides here to show. Do you want me to just let you know when we should move forward?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll watch that one for this.
Jump right into the mission statement. So, yeah, I guess I just wanna start out by saying, one, it's been, you know, continues to be a privilege for Lake County as a Watership Coordinator. This is twelve years for me, and I have to say, you know, I continue to hear throughout the region and the state that Lake County works well together. We have, I think, incredible cooperation here, partnerships are super, we're able to accomplish a lot because of really super people, both private property owners and our national resource organizations throughout the county are really fantastic. So, very, very lucky. So let's go ahead and we'll jump in. So our mission continues to be to say to the Watership Council, and that is to promote cooperative Watership Restoration across jurisdictional boundaries and to better Lake County and Lake County's people. Let's go on. So, just taking a couple of slides this year, some focal areas, we really wanted to make sure were evident to our property owners that we work with, why, what we do, really, why we do it, what's the meaning behind it all? You know the background of Watership Councils, but, yes, we're out there to really improve overall Watership conditions. We implement lots of restoration projects, you know, our board is very focused on implementation and working with property owners. Educational opportunities, we take lots of advantage of those, working with our youth all the way to our adult audiences. We monitor our projects for effectiveness to see if they really, you know, if it made a difference or not. We conduct Watership Assessments, and we have land and outreach, collaborate with a lot of partners, and provide opportunities for contractors here in Lake County. So go on to the next one. So why do we do it? What's behind all of that? And I think, you know, we've thought a lot about this after twelve years, and we're sure we're out there overall to improve overall Watership function, and supporting the people and ecosystem that live, that we live in. And collaboration, we're really looking at these larger landscape-scale projects that affect both private and public land, and those have been some phenomenal partnerships. And like I said, I don't think possible, maybe in other areas, because we are so fortunate here to have folks that come together to really, with an overall goal. It's not personal, it's not competitive, it's because we all have the goal of improving the county that we love. So, and definitely, we're always out there to look for improvements to our wildlife and aquatic habitats. But because of that, you know, lots of folks will see these big fish passage projects, or wildlife habitat improvement projects, and they're not cheap, they're expensive. And it's hard to sometimes stand behind, why do we put so much money into a suckerfish? Well, some of these TNE, the threatened endangered listed species, our goal is to delist those species, so that we can really promote our property owners, protect our property owners, we have the funding right now to do that. And once those things, like fish passage, are mandated by the state, we can no longer come in and help. So if you are a property owner and you are all of a sudden stuck with a mandate that says you have to have passage if you're a diversion structure, you're looking at, you know, between a hundred thousand dollars up, that has to come out of pocket. So those are things we can do right now to really support our local ranching community, and we can cover the possibest projects, but also improve, you know, the Watership for the fisheries. So, and obviously, we've always been behind the local economy, it's really important to us to put our local contractors here in the county to work, buy supplies when we can within the county itself. It provides great opportunities for property owners to improve the land value, yeah, improvement, and really back up those working landscapes, the ranching landscapes, the timber landscapes that we live on. So let's go ahead and move on, and move into talking a little bit about, as you know, our challenges are getting greater. We've been combating drought, we have sagegrass issues, we have forest health issues, continuing with larger landscape-scale fires. So we're looking at some of those things, stream temperatures in different areas are on the rise, and others we're really putting back into temperatures that are resilient, are great for fish and for other habitat, improving and looking at mule deer habitat and wetlands. So our goal is really to look at these issues, but we have to look at them with flexibility, listening to people, listening to our audience, our property owners and those that we work with, and I think the projects that we implement have to last a long time. We're few in number, when we go in and implement a project, it really needs to be something that has some longevity to it, that that property owner doesn't all of a sudden have a huge maintenance issue. And I think we have to be open to coming back after we've implemented a project, and really look at, is it working or not, and make those tweaks so that it doesn't become someone else's problem. So we really have to look at, know the longevity of the whole system that we're working within. So go on to the next. So we continue, as you know, a lot of our funding that comes from state and federally is an important, our wall base, excuse me, on the significance of many factors throughout the state, also on a local level. Significance right now, through the Oregon Watership Council before, where a lot of our money comes from, continues to be looking at aquatic habitat for native fish species. We're now seeing a more holistic approach coming from some of the organizations that are looking at our uplands, but more just than juniper, but also those, those dry-type forest habitats. Obviously, sagebrush and sage step habitat is important for sagegrass and mule deer, and of course, our wetlands. We're right within the Pacific Flyway and the Sonic regions, so those continue to be focal points and where a lot of project dollars are coming from, those specific areas are important, so.
Marcy, before you go, can you talk a little bit more about the uplands work?
You bet.
Because we all know that's where everything starts, and that's the most important, in a lot of ways, the most important place to make sure we have it in good condition.
Sure. And I, I think the great thing too here in Lake County is, I guess, we're a little bit different in the fact that we're not just, we're not a sand and steel head county, we don't have, we're not connected to the Pacific Ocean, we're a closed basin system, so the water we have is extremely important. And so I think we can look at things much more holistically, and that's what we try to do as a Watership Council, I know a lot of the other organizations do as well. And like you said, it all starts in the uplands, and everything that happens in the uplands affects everything all the clear on down to the water bodies. And so, that's been the really exciting focus here in Lake County with the forest health, the northwater forest health project, Crooked Mud Honey, is, you're both very familiar with that project. Would it need collaborative with Urban Department of Forestry and the Forest Service? Our seventeen property owners plus NRCS, SWCD, Jim, we've got it, we have a huge group of people, Collins Timber, all these folks coming together saying, you know, we know we have some issues, we know we need to treat these, these upland areas for, you know, thinings who have helped the forest. We're finding that a lot of, you know, as a property owner, I know even from my own standpoint, we don't know a lot about timber sometimes, how to treat our timber stands. And I think we've been able to come in with some great educational opportunities through workshops as a group, for some community trainings, and then we're able to, we've been able to leverage quite a significant amount of money to put on the ground to start treating private land and public land. The Forest Service is looking at like fifty thousand acres that they're treating, and private land, we're looking at about twenty-five thousand acres. So, yeah, we're jumping right in, we, and I'll talk, I have some pictures here coming up too, but it's really, it really is making a difference, and we're really looking at this whole ridge top to ridge top concept. So, especially through the Crooked Creek area, really came together nicely looking at that Crooked Mud Honey focus, we have really been able to take those upland projects, be treating those uplands on private land, so really thinning out those timber stands. Some of the folks are going with a commercial cut on their own, and then we're also doing the forest thinning in conjunction. But then we're able to use those materials all the way down into our stream bodies. So we've been able to actually complete some streamage stabilization projects using the wood that was left over, you know, juniper or other material from the cutting projects actually in our streams to help stabilize our streams. So that's been a really great opportunity in that whole ridge top to ridge top concept because now through Crooked Creek, we've worked with probably, at this point, it's reaching over, well, initially thirteen property owners were part of the whole restoration effort, and over thirty projects were completed within stream and within meadow, and now we're tackling all these upland projects as well. So it's a really neat tie-in from one side of the ridge to the other.
Yeah. So within that, as we improve the stream conditions so we don't have a loss of water?
Yes.
And we look at all these treatments on the uplands, are we gonna be able to monitor that to see what kind of value the upland water that we have lost in the past years, you know, through management or practices to the downstream flows? Because, the reason I bring that up, I said on that task force, the drought task force group, and all of those folks primarily were folks who were interested in downstream, the downstream conditions, the basins. And when we got to talking about the uplands and the fact that we can't create more moisture, a lot of moisture we lose because of the conditions in the uplands.
Sure.
So I'm really curious if we're gonna be able to prove that through good management practices on these lands, whether they're federal or private, we're actually gonna not have a serious problem with a drought condition?
I am hopeful that in time we're able to provide that information. We have some really great monitoring protocols set up currently, but really moving it all the way through, it's a little harder to capture actually what's happening in stream, and it may take some time. But I think in time, hopefully, we can capture that information and have that to report back to folks, but I think it'll be significant. We know how much water is released, you know, when you start cutting juniper, and now really treating the pipe stands as well, it should be in significant impact. So, we're hoping to capture that.
Yeah. Well, and not to keep you from going on, but just because I had a great interest in that in my former world, and working with Scott Peats, I think you might remember Scott from back in the day?
Yes, Matt Scott.
And we had that Shee Walk Camp project, and we had people like John O'Leary and my father-in-law, Ed Murphy, and other landowners along there because we treated the whole landscape. And they saw string, or they saw springs and different tributaries come back to life, but they hadn't saw since they were weedhoppers. And so, you know, there was visual evidence, but there wasn't hardcore, you know, monitoring that proved that out.
We need that with this project, I think that's something, you know, it's definitely, I know we're all from, from Forest Service, I mean, I know LCRI, all of us are being asked to speak on this topic at various, you know, various audiences throughout the state and beyond. So that is the very kind of research we do need.
Yeah.
So we can follow up with the story and keep telling it so that it starts happening nationwide.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm right with you.
I'll stop and ask some questions.
No, that's great, feel free at any time. So just, I mean, it's talk a little bit, with any of the restoration work that we complete here in Lake County, we feel like we do have success because of the collaborative groups, looking at the large landscape scale size, and then lots of research. We always hire good engineers that can collect historic data and complete stream surveys ahead of time prior to actually completing a project, so we feel like once that implementation is done, it's done correctly. We've also had great success with- We've also had great success with like our Moose Lake Stream Reconnaissance, Crooked Creek Stream Reconnaissance. That's that pre-research information, a really big action items to go off of so that we can start implementing good projects. So we can go on to the next one. We'll move very quickly.
We're good on time.
Are we good? Okay. All right. So just going to talk a little bit about the projects we're working on in each watershed. There's five watersheds in Lake County, Moose Lake Watershed, Silver, Silver Lake, or when we go Warner Basin Watershed, and then we have Shiawakan, Upper Side Can, and then Silver Lake Watershed. So we'll move through those. So we can go on to the next one. So currently, we're working in Cogswell Creek with Extreme Reconnaissance and Design Plan. This is a project, there's actually six property owners involved in this project and we're looking at projects all the way up through the system. So the entire, it's only six mile long, it's tributary, but it's an important one and a lot of people draw off of this water source. So we're looking at several fish passage issues, but also improving habitat and irrigation potential for the property owners so that their kind of dilapidated irrigation system will be improved. So it'll be a really great package. We're hoping that project will be put on the ground here in late this fall or early next year. So that's been a real good project. Moving on to the next one. We had in two thousand seventeen some spring development projects, working with U.S. Fish and Wildlife on these on project properties. We had two or three of these throughout the Moose Lake Basin. So we can go on. And that's both for livestock and wildlife improvements. We're also working on a Muddy Creek Restoration Project and this is a design process we're going through right now. This is KRB Ranch and we're out on Juniper RV Park. And so we're looking at, at this point, everything below the reservoir down to the highway, just really improving that whole stream network for fisheries and also providing passage from the actual reservoir on down into Muddy Creek itself. So we can go on to the next one. And this is also a juniper project that we're working on, Stane Ranch. And this will be Aspen enhancement, where we'll be removing all the juniper from within the Aspen standard throughout this meadow on Muddy Creek, upper Muddy Creek. Next project, Cogswell Creek. We also have an upland project there as well. This is primarily a juniper removal project that does tie in well with kind of our northwater project as far as treating, you know, just treating land in general or reducing fire risk and improving grass and bords and, like you say, spring potential. So let's move on to the next one. You've heard about our work on Thomas Creek for years. We keep thinking we're about completing the Thomas Creek and then something else pops up. So that entire tributary, we worked with property owners up and down the whole forty miles of stream. This little project is one that is right down at the very bottom by Moose Lake. It was a fish passage project that was put in in like two thousand, right, Duxell, and it's just become an obsolete fish passage methodology. It was something that was used to the time for red-bam trout, but we have sucker in that stream which have no jump height at all. And currently, those sucker fish cannot move upstream. And while we put a lot of money and restoration and fish passage effort up above, this one really needs to be finished. So we're completing, so we're working on that one. Let's go on to the next slide. Another juniper removal project on the west side of Lakeview, this is a phase two. So juniper removal continues to be something that property owners throughout Lake County are working towards, you know, improving those, you know, the ground for livestock raging, but also for wildlife habitat. So we can move on from that one. Like in another, this is a forest health treatment. We're working on Hay Creek, a couple hundred acres there. So it'll be a thinning process that does have some bark beetle infestation within the stand as well. So it's going to be a really good little project to get in and thin out. So let's go on to the next project. So we'll move on to Warner Basin Watershed. So our focus in the Warner Basin Watershed right now is really looking at honey, honey oil and Deep Creek systems, which are all Warner sucker habitat and red-bam trout. Because Warner sucker is an endangered species, that's why the emphasis of the focal area. Definitely big supporters of, you know, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is behind this project in a big way and so is ODFW, just in seeing fish passage at all of these different points of diversion. So because of the sucker fish. And so we have, there are about ten different diversions that were barriers initially. We've been working with the property owners and also with the irrigation districts to provide passage one by one at each of these different sites. So we're working closely with the Warner Basin Collaborative, which is another really great group locally here with SWCD, BLM, Forest Service, and then also U.S. Fish, ODFW. So we've got it, we have a good group. So this was the Dyke diversion, which was a barrier initially, and that was two thousand fourteen we completed. That was the very first project. And we can go on to the next one. This summer, we just completed a project at the MC diversion. We can go on to the next one there. You can see there's the barrier there. What we put in here was a bypass channel on the upper left there. And that will actually during irrigation season, fish will be flushed through the bypass channel and back into the stream down below. We were also able to improve the irrigation system here. We put a catwalk in, improved their headgate system for better, for efficiency for irrigation. And then also we replaced two culverts just downstream on Twenty Mile Creek for fish passage as well. They were both kind of perched and undersized for the stream and the roadway, so we replaced those. So those are going to be, those are kind of win-win projects where, yes, you're definitely helping the sucker fish on passage and connectivity to the headwaters, but also definitely a benefit to the irrigators as well. So those are really good little partnerships. So we can move on to the next one. So this is our next project. We're just recently funded by the Oregon watershed, Hansbrough, along with several other partners. At the town derision, right there by the store, as you cross the bridge up Twenty Mile Creek, so you don't take the Twenty Mile Creek road, but this is actually on Deep Creek. So we'll actually be putting in something called a rapid channel rock ramp here for fish passage and again, improving their irrigation network right there at the mouth where they start taking water. So that'll be improved. Should actually keep in the long run more water in the stream because it'll be more efficient than what's currently there, but also improve their efficiency throughout their system. So we're kind of working our way through these on Honey Creek, Justin Farrell, he's kind of taken the lead on the Honey Creek projects. I've taken the lead on Deep Creek and Twenty Mile Creek. We've now completed all the projects out of this summer on Twenty Mile Creek, so are completely done. And now we'll be focusing on Deep Creek. And so this is our first big one and then we'll be looking at Starvot diversion, hopefully next year. So Adel Water Improvement District has been really good to work with. So we're making some headway out there. So let's go on to the next one. So we're also in Warner Basin, working in Big Valley. Big Valley, of course, you know, at the falls, sucker fish can, cannot obviously get up the falls, that's a barrier. So the upper part of, that put fourteen miles of Deep Creek is really a red-bam trout stream, but there is an incredible amount of habitat up in Big Valley and throughout. Big Valley connects with six other streams. So we are doing some fantastic work up there. And we have two fish passage barriers we'll be working on this summer. We have designs and everything ready to go, money is leveraged and ready to be put on the ground. So we'll be looking at those two and that's going to open up about over twenty miles of habitat for fish or up in that area. And we have kind of a whole, a whole reconnaissance plan actually like this for upper Deep Creek that includes the Forest Service as well. So we'll be looking at culverts and a whole gamut of different kinds of projects over the next couple of years. So go on to the next one. Northwater Forest Health, we'll kind of go through this quickly since we've just talked a little bit about it, but you know, Forest Service right there in the middle with the private properties all around there. So there's some tremendous effort taking place. Go on to the next slide. As I mentioned, we're working with about seventeen property owners right now. And so the Watership Council's role in this is one, we're a partner. The two, the two big pots of money basically are the joint chiefs through the NRCS and then we have the Watership Council with OWEB money and also ODFW dollars that have been placed and that'll be run through the Watership Council. So ODF has been extremely significant in this whole process, not only helping us kind of steer through this whole, you know, working with each of the property owners, setting up really good plans and prescriptions for each of the property owners. As you know, talking to Amy Marcus and Daniel O'Bell, there's been just some really good, really good information provided for each property owner with kind of a management plan and ideas on, you know, things that they can accomplish in their uplands. And so this is actually on the Tracy Ranch here and that just turned out beautiful, the whole of those five hundred and twenty-five acres that we've been, and he also commercially thinned through this at the same time, was a really neat effort. And the market was just up enough, the timber market that he actually could, I don't know that he really made money on that project, but he was at least able to cover the cost of getting that all cleaned out. So we actually, through the Watership Council, we've completed about a thousand acres in this, in two thousand seventeen, that we helped cut about, we've thinned four different properties. This next summer, we'll be thinning about four more and then putting in for some more dollars through OWEB to continue those efforts. So, and Max and Casey Johnson with ODF will be jumping in with a whole bunch more this summer. They're all ready to go. Casey has them all set, plans established. So contractors hired, it'll be starting out soon. So let's jump into the next slide. So this is just showing a couple of the demonstration of how we use some of the timber from the uplands down into our water bodies. This project here in the middle bottom is a series of headcuts that were up through this stream system and we were able to utilize a lot of the juniper right there within just that one little middle section, our middle picture, we used a hundred trees within that project. So it was pretty significant. To the very right, that project also, a series of headcuts that we're working our way through this whole meadow system. The property owner's goal is to stabilize those and hopefully over time, you know, sediment will catch within that, those systems and start building that water table back up, improving those meadows. And hopefully, you know, you, hopefully we'll see increased, you know, grass growth out there for livestock and also for wildlife. So on that one, we utilized, boy, well over, I would say probably through at least three hundred trees on that project.
Were you doing any bank cutting on those deep cuts where you're sharing them off and hanging them?
We did. On the ones to the right, we did not.
Okay.
We're testing out kind of a new theory on that one. It's kind of a, just a filling system. And then the one in the middle, yes. So that one, we did actually go in, of course, the banks weren't nearly as incised on that stream. But we definitely did, did some excavation, definitely, you know, pulled the banks back and then used some rock and soil and sod mats on top of those trees so to really stabilize that effort. There's lots less water on the right that will be going through that system. So we'll kind of be monitoring it closely to see how it works, but it's a very inexpensive approach. So we're hoping it works, actually. Yeah. So on to the next slide. We worked with Collins Timber this last summer too. They had a series of headcuts up through Rosa Creek of the highway on the north side. And so we're, yeah, we'll hope to stabilize the headcuts, bring the water table back up and hopefully, you know, improve that meadow system too up through Rosa Creek. Go on to the next project, the next slide. Next one. Crooked Creek, we're just about done with our restoration efforts through there, but we are still thinning. On the lower picture is a thinning project on the Thornton Ranch. The upper picture is also on the Thornton Ranch and we actually did a pond and plug restoration project through their, the creek had turned, well, their ditch system kind of, it continued to erode so badly that it changed the course of the channel, the historical channel, it started to, the actual channel moved into the ditch. So we put the channel back into its historical tributary and we excavated that channel out and then did a pond and plug through the whole ditch system and then also putting a new irrigation system for them through this pasture. Really worked out well. We can go on to the next slide. You can see here, this was kind of the before and after. So the upper picture was the ditch system that had turned into the creek. And then the post picture, within three weeks with the pond and plug, we were seeing the ponds fill like this. It's pretty dramatic, yeah, really dramatic. And the meadow was amazing this summer, so much feed, incredible amount of feed. So this is just a thinning project in conjunction. So, oh, you're fine, you're good. Elder Creek, this is part of the Shiawakan efforts. You know, there's been a lot of restoration work completed by the Forest Service and the Watership Council, others through the main stem Shiawakan and then several of the tributaries. Elder Creek is the second largest tributary to Shiawakan. We worked here with JWTR, which is now Green Diamond, to actually implement, this was a huge culvert, about seventy feet long in length. This picture was a disjust, so it was a very difficult location to work, but definitely a perched culvert for fish passage and also undersized for the roadway. So we worked with, yeah, with Green Diamond, we were able to install this whole new system. This is a new eighty-foot culvert that was placed within there with a string simulated design. You can see, you know, the new technology is to make the interior of the culverts look just, kind of mimic string conditions. So really good contractor on that one. They did a tremendous job there and the road, the whole roadway is going to be greatly improved. So that's just off the Twenty Eight Road there. Yeah. So we can go on to the next one. Paisetown Clear, you're very familiar with this project. It's obviously all complete, but it had a few issues. ODFW has been monitoring the Paisetown Clear screen for, oh, probably the last, well, since two thousand and six. So they were just finding that there was still too much velocity within the screen system for fisheries. And then there was a lot of ice buildup. And so we were able to help the badly ditch company with some OWEB funding so that we could play some baffles within that screen system. So it'll slow the water and hopefully prevent some of the ice buildup, so that's the goal. And that's majority of that project happened in two thousand and seventeen. So on to the next one. We're also working on a project with on the ZX Ranch for some streamage stabilization. As we know, last year with all the moisture we did have in the snowpack, there were some really, a lot of flooding that occurred. The Shiawakan definitely took a hit, especially along a lot of the irrigation network through the ZX Ranch. That's pretty intricate since, you know, their irrigation, the roads to all their irrigation diversions are right along the Shiawakan and so they had a lot of washout. So we were able to help them with a grant to come in and help stabilize some of these big sections of stream. They're completing a lot of the work themselves, so we're just kind of coming in to help with some of the extra materials for that project. So, and Upper Side Can, and you can go on to the next one. We just have one project in Upper Side Can and it's been a phased project on a property, it's part of the old Bratton Ranch. And it's actually a thinning project through their pine and also running juniper. Will be developed in the spring there this summer as well. So on to the next one, and the next one. So, and in Silver Creek, as you know, we have just the three main tributaries up on the Silver Creek watershed, like Bridge Buck and Silver Creek. This is a riparian enhancement project that we're working on, one of the big ranches there. Will be helping them improve their grazing management strategies along the Silver Creek, two miles of Silver Creek by installing some riparian fencing, with some streamage stabilization. They've actually just finished this project because it's been so mild this winter, we continue to work. So, but yeah, it's a great little project. So on to the next slide. So like I mentioned earlier, we're really looking at this whole ridge top to ridge top effort. I think it's really important and there's some great opportunities for us to work on these large landscapes, having great collaboratives and really accomplish a lot from top to bottom. Next slide, just, and we continue to monitor our projects over time. Everything's monitored from three to five years and sometimes more depending on the project. Definitely want to make sure our projects we implement are worthwhile and if we can improve more techn, you know, technologies as we move along. On to the next one. So with all of the Crooked Creek efforts, both top and top to bottom, we're actually going to be placing an educational kiosk at the Chandler State Park. Stevie Ruda with the Interagency Office has been helping me with this. She's phenomenal, you know. So we have one more panel to create and it'll be installed for the spring. So we can work with the state parks there to get all of us established. I think it'll be a really nice kiosk there just to highlight the efforts. I think it'll be a really nice kiosk there, just to highlight the efforts and the watershed. Next one. And as you know, many, many years ago, we came to you for project dollars to start our North Lake education program, our outdoor school. That has continued, we're on nine years now. We still really love going up to North Lake. And so Colleen Withers and I, Colleen helps me with the education program, our little education coordinator, she's fantastic. So this was our program here this last June. We can go on to the next one.
Have you seen any of those students come, go to college and come back here?
We've seen a couple of them come back, yeah.
That was one of our desires way back then, yeah.
It's great. Really enjoying that. Those kids still have super memories of that outdoor school. We really, it's, it's a great program. Good kids. So we also have been completing that outdoor school, are hosting one in Paisley for the last few years as well. So that's been a great group to max K through sixth grade as well. On to the next one. That was North Lake again. So, we brought in some music this year too. So that was fun. Utilize our local people. Next slide. And we have been working also with Dusty Count's class. And before that was Katie James. We've been working with them for a long time for the Lakeview High School Monitoring Program. So with the Advanced Field Biology Class, we actually take out all those students in the fall. And we've been working on a couple different ranches where they monitor stream temperature, dissolved oxygen and pH and all kinds of things. They get to shock fish, a whole variety of things they get to do on that day. But also provide that property owner with kind of a plan year to year, showing what those monitoring results are along that stream as changes have been made.
So Marcy, has there ever been any discussion about trying to set aside a little bit of the program for the alternative bit, workforce group?
Oh, that's a great idea.
You know, I'm gonna be visiting with the KCC rep today. So I'd like to visit with you a little later, not just right.
I do that.
I think there's an opportunity there because, you know, it's, it's been a wonderful program. And the resource part of it, they get to do a lot of work out there, but they don't get to see so much the resource programs like you have here.
You're super.
Yeah.
I'd definitely be interested in visiting with you about that.
Okay.
All right, on to the next one. And we have our website up and running. Still a lot of work to do. It seems like we're very, very busy. So sometimes our website is the last on our agenda, but we are improving it as we go. So, I think that's about it.
Do we have a link on our website with them? If we don't, we should make that happen.
Yeah.
Great.
Go ahead.
Wow, yeah, we can go maybe on to just the last slide. Talk a little about our goals, which we mostly covered. But we'll go back over them just quickly. Is the ridge top to ridge top restoration continues to be a goal, the large landscape scale projects, quality partnerships, the Northwater Forest Health definitely, and the Warner Basin aquatic habitat projects will continue. We're planning to utilize this Goose Lake Stream Reconnaissance Plan, which gave us a whole new set of action items throughout Lake County on thirteen different streams on private land. We've had, I think, well, over a hundred property owners worked with us to actually come up with this document, which was pretty phenomenal. And then actually, MCRI and the students that come in to work with Claire Thomas in the Summerhood Monitoring Program, they actually helped us conduct that study last year, and it really turned out well. So we're pretty excited about that effort. Really a usable document for us. So that's our, kind of our last issue.
I have one big comment I'll make. I mean, there's a ton that we could make, but I really like the emphasis that you have put on over the years to monitoring. Because, you know, Jim's here and we all know that that's always the biggest bug with most resource management projects is no one does adequate monitoring to know if they're doing it right or wrong, or have the validity of it. And that's what I think is, I mean, as big as the program has gotten that you've done, it's only gonna get bigger because there's not gonna be any pushback with quality monitoring.
And you're right. And it's something we need to continue to work on. It is often an area you find that it's difficult to come back. Everybody's so busy. I don't know if it's really entertaining whether I need to hire someone specific to monitoring because it's, when it's myself, and we're managing all these other projects, monitoring's difficult. And it's something that I'm so thankful that it, that most of our granting organizations require, it keeps us on task, but I think we can continue to do better.
Well, if you can find the financial wherewithal, I think it'll pay you back a hundredfold as time goes on. I really do.
I agree. I don't believe that the name of the game is being, you have proof, proof in the pudding of what we've accomplished. So, yeah.
Well, and credibility, because you alluded to it. You want to find out where things are working. And that credibility is tremendous when you say, no, it didn't hurt the way we thought and bring them back and fix that.
All right. Dynamic systems we work in.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, you're learning, we're learning constantly.
Yep.
So, very important. Agreed.
There's so much, Marcy. Comments and everything I'd like to make, but the one thing for sure is the upper watershed management on the forest health and how important that is. We know clean water and water is so important in today's world, especially with the droughts and everything. I've heard all kinds of different numbers on the eight one juniper, how many gallons of water it is and all this. If we tough just the projects you guys have done over the last twelve years along with many other people, the amount of gallons of water that we've probably put back into the stream or conserve, and you hear this every year, but that, that pine tree takes more water than that juniper tree. So the densities around our riparian areas and everything to be appropriate and be sustainable, a diverse stand is important for our water also. And I know I'm singing to the choir, but that's so important up there, is that if those densities within the forest is correct, we have more water to get in the stream. And I just applaud you to keep working on that and working collaboratively. Appreciate that so much. And then you throw the fire resiliency in there at the same time. It just, it's, as Mr. Shannon says, the domino effect. It's just, it's all the right things, we know it. A lot of people away from there don't know it. So the monitoring and the documentation, as you've done, very good documentation, is so important. Thank you for the twelve years of starting from where you were to where we're at today. It's unbelievable. I don't even know how many millions of dollars have been put on the ground.
I know.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been exciting. I think we are, I mean, we really are a success because of our partners. We just have, it's a great county to work in, really is. So, yeah.
Well, you know, it takes, takes the right personality and the right kind of people to bring those partners together, even with some of the partners that were resistant over the years. And it makes a big difference. A lot of us can talk, we need to get everybody at the table. But it takes the right people to convene those. And with Jim, yourself and others, the partnerships have been great, so thank you.
So maybe it's called organization and leadership.
Good way to finish.
I've had it in spades.
Relationships are everything, that's for sure.
Mr. Walls is gonna...
I just want to say, partnerships are fabulous. And along the monitoring lines, we have sixteen years of extensive monitoring with Claire. We finally, we've had some brilliant people working on that database to try and make it available to the whole world. It's not worked. We just hired a master degree student out of Oregon State College of Forestry to spend two years developing that. So it does get access. Josh Fetter-Yohann just spent several weeks getting researcher all this wildlife data that we had because he couldn't get through the databases. And it's beyond my capability, I want to tell you, way beyond. But it's gonna happen. And then it'll also provide that data where we tackle the twenty-one inch rule and where we're overstocked with twenty-one inch trees in certain areas. I'm not, we'll get into that debate, but we're good, that'll help us with that too. So the partnerships and, and Marcy said so well. This county is unique. It really works well together. It's just a pleasure to be here.
And you and I have talked about that twenty-one inch for years, but just since you mentioned it. We're not only overstocked in areas of twenty-one inch, but we're understocked and smaller, the understory, as a result of the twenty-one inch. Because we're taking all that viable wood, you might say, that's, that has any commercial value out in these timber sales or these different activities that we're doing. And we need to be leaving more of that behind because as we've said many a time, when we talked about managing for multiple use on a sustainable basis, we're missing the sustainable part in many of these stands. They're just big clear cuts with overstocked trees remaining, that's it.
No reproduction.
No reproduction.
And there's several, a whole bunch of research go behind that. But, yeah, we're not gonna have something in sixty, eighty years. We don't change our...
Practices.
Practices. So we're working on it.
Well, and it's not just here. I know that the emphasis is here for a pilot, but it's not just here, it's across the west. You know, well, it's across the, the east side of Oregon, the East Cascades.
Yeah, it's applicable to a whole. I dislike the pilot because I don't want to draw the fire that'll come with those whole east sides. Before, let's be a pilot, we got the monitoring and then we can go and say, look what this does, it'll work everywhere. You understand the politics of the fire, you can draw on that question, so, yeah.
Yep. So, any other questions? Just a great presentation on the area board.
Thank you, thanks for your support, we sure appreciate it. Yeah, and don't ever hesitate. If you have issues, thoughts, ideas, please let us know, please, like, make sure the action happens on our work.
No, that's great. I will try and follow up with the, on the alternative bit program. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So what do you think of my, you're so great. And they won't come back yet.